Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council Meeting for Tuesday, February 26, 2019. Approve the council agenda. Any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor, council, I don't have any additions or corrections.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second by Mary, second by Steve to approve the agenda. All in favor? Aye. Pose carried. Implication is from Cross Point Church. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to pray. Let's pray. Generally, Father, we recognize you as the source of wisdom and the source of blessing. And, Lord, we pray and ask that you would bless our community, that you would bless our community with healthy families, that you would bless our community with people who are grateful to those who are serving and grateful for the opportunities that we have to live here. And, Lord, that we would be good neighbors to one another, looking out for one another. Lord, I pray a blessing over this city council as they serve and pray a blessing for them as they do so. And they give their time and their energy for our good and for our community. And, Lord, give them the wisdom that they need and the courage that they need to do what is right or what is best. We pray these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Next, a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go ahead, Matt.
Mayor and council, before we get into recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city, I joked earlier today that I was gonna have a newly appointed police chief wait till after all of our public hearings tonight, but we don't have any, so... But I wanted to spend a little bit of time...
Oh, we can make one up.
But I did want to spend a little time introducing Tom Girerson, who I selected to take over for current police chief Dan Hatton when he retires in May. There was a three-month process. And upon Dan announcing his retirement in October, there was a three-month process that went into play through an internal search. And I just wanna to say, you know, I'm proud of the leadership that we have within the police department. There was three excellent candidates that applied for the chief position. And at the end of the day, I selected Tom to take over those duties upon Dan's retirement. And I just wanted to formally introduce him as the next police chief here tonight at the council meeting in front of the city council. And so, I don't think I told Tom, but we were expecting like at least a 20-minute speech from him to prepare him for his new role. But Tom, why don't you come up as mayor and council? Tom Girerson will be the next police chief upon Dan's retirement.
First, mayor and council, I'd like to thank you and City Administrator Yannick for the opportunity that's been bestowed upon me. My intention is, over the next couple of months, before I actually assume the duties, is to meet with each and every one of you, so you're having an idea of who I am, I get an idea of who you are, and what you can expect from me. So, you can look forward to a phone call from me or an email sometime in the next couple of months, anyway.
That's good to know. So, we don't think we're in trouble.
He'll have to pull up our license and sire on that.
Well, I thought it was appropriate for a heads-up. And again, just I wanna thank you all for the opportunity. I do really think this is an honor, and I don't take this lightly. So, at any time, if you have any questions of me, feel free to give me a call before or after my appointment. And I'd be more than happy to take any questions you might have of me right now.
So, when do we start calling you chief?
I would guess that would probably be May 4.
Well, Dan, you're still chief.
So, we'll make sure that any of the messes will happen in the next two months when Dan's still on board.
He assured me everything would be cleaned up before then.
Well, congratulations, Tom, and welcome.
All right. Thank you very much.
This is your fellow officers in some work.
I guess this is my entourage or my support. Yeah, I guess I do wanna recognize them for supporting me through this whole process.
Sounded like a really good process, Matt.
I appreciate that. So, I'm the council speaking themselves on that.
I would agree with that. Thank you again.
Once again, thanks.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Recognitions of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything today? All righty. Citizens addressing the council, just come forward, state your name and address.
I thought they were gonna stay for the whole meeting.
Have to lock the door.
You've got some work here, Tom.
Approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of February 26, 2019. Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Steve, second by Chad to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose carried. Consent agenda, this will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. A is purchase of public works tractor and mower. B is approval of the cemetery columbarium installation. C is issuing transit merchant license to Tina Novotny to operate a pop-up shop at the depot. And D is claims and appropriations and contract payments, register A. Anything you want to pull off?
Make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose carried. Consent agenda number two, claims appropriation, contract payments, register B. My son has a check there for wrapping new squads for the police department, so I'll be abstaining. Make a motion to approve. Motion by Steve, second by Dave. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose carried. We have no public hearing. Communications requests, petitions, planning zoning department, 2018 year-end report. Good evening, Dan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. This evening, I'd like to take 10 or 15 minutes here and go through our planning zoning building department and the report, hit some of the highlights, answer any questions you might have. So, with that, I'll get into it. 2018 was a busy year in the building department once again. I think we actually had our second highest building valuation ever in 2018. It's not necessarily reflected in the amount of permits that we had. You can see in 2018, we had 866 permits issued, which was about half of the year before. And the spike in 2017 was from the hailstorm, so that was an outlier, as you can see on the chart here. Here's the valuation chart. You can see in 2017, we had almost $70 million worth of construction valuation. Much of that was attributed to the high school project, which obviously was a great community asset that was built. In 2018, we didn't necessarily have any one large project like that. It was a lot of smaller projects. However, we did have almost $45 million worth of construction valuation. As you'll note, going back to, you know, 2008, and, you know, it was less than 20 million. You know, 2011 and 2012, at the height of the recession, you know, we were more in that eight, seven, eight million dollar range. So, things have certainly bounced back economically here in town, and that's a good thing. Total inspections, the inspection amount with the large projects is high, even though the permits wasn't necessarily high. Those larger projects require more inspections. 2017, we were just over 3,000 inspections, and then in 2018, we were probably about 2750 or so, which again is busy. We did in 20, early 2018, add a new inspector. We have now two inspectors to go along with the building official, and one of our inspectors primarily does building inspections, and then the other inspector handles a rental inspection as well as helps with building inspections as well. And that's gone very well for us. New dwelling unit construction, again, this is a sign of, I think, a healthy local economy, is the amount of homes being constructed. Last year, we had 34 homes constructed in Hutchinson. You'll notice here, from really 2014 and on, we've had fairly strong new housing construction. I know, you know, years ago, there's been some years where we had 55, 65, 70 new homes built, but I think we all saw what happened after that. That's not necessarily the best when you have those big spikes. I think having a nice steady housing of, you know, 25 to 35 new homes being built is certainly a good thing for the community. Obviously, it's a lot better than back in 2009, 2010, 11, when there was only a handful of homes built. So, we're looking at about 34 in 2018, and I would expect that 2019 here, that number will be probably very similar to that within probably five, one way or the next.
So, Dan, that's single-family homes?
Yeah, that's single-family homes. Then I'll talk a little bit about the larger projects that are more apartment-related as So, these are just the highlight of some of how we got to the $44 million valuation within the community. Almost $7 million of that was the Highfield apartment projects. Obviously, in the south end of town there, there's several buildings that have been under construction and continue to be under construction. The new homes, 34 of those obviously, came to about $6.5 million in valuation. Century Court Apartments, there's three buildings that are going to be, were permitted there, and one's under construction, and I think some are at other various stages of construction. That was about $4.5 million. The hotel project was about 3.8 million. Hutch Utilities had a fairly large remodel project on their plant on Highway 15 and Highway 7. Walmart did a remodel, and then the pharmacy. So, there's a good variety of projects there. You know, those are more the commercial-oriented ones and the larger ones. Obviously, we still have your, you know, the remodel projects and the smaller projects that obviously aren't on this list, but contribute to the investment in the community as well. This is another slide that talks a little bit about the Uppenor project, because it was about $3.5 million. And there's a little bit of, a couple of these are, the Hutch North Plant is on there twice, I apologize, and Walmart. Hutch Health also had a $1.35 million remodel. PetSmart was $825,000. And then HTI, the vet clinic, urgent care, and the historical museum were also projects that were done last year as well. I'll talk a little bit more about now the planning side of things. Does anybody have any questions on any of the building department activities or any of those information I included in your packet or what I just went over before I move on? Okay. One of the primary things we did in the planning zoning department, also affects the building department last year, was we scanned all of our address files electronically, and now they're available in our laser fiche system. So, anybody that's ever been over on our side of the building, we had this gigantic file cabinet that was kinda like a big rolodex that had all the address files for the last, basically forever. And we scanned all of those documents into an electronic system that we can now get into with search by keywords, search by address, you know, print things, email things. It's very convenient for us, and that was a big undertaking. I appreciate the help that receive staff on that, IT and our consultant as well. And then also, one of the other items that was a large piece of some of what I did was a city facilities master planning process. Kinda finished up the first phase of that in 2018 and then moved on to the second phase, which is now more the detailed study of the police department and determining a site and that process that we're in the midst of right now. Another accomplishment was the fact that we're able to catch up on our rental inspections. As you've probably known, I've told you for the last several years, we took over that program from the fire department several years ago. And the fire department had gone through some staffing changes over the years. And then there was a period between the building department having it and the fire department having it where things kind of didn't move as quickly as we would have liked. And finally, we were able to catch up on that and get to where we need to be. And I'll talk a little bit about more of those details here in a second. Planning commission side of things, you know, there isn't a ton of activity going to the planning commission. Obviously, there's been a fair amount of construction activity, but we're not seeing a lot of what I'll call, you know, residential plating of property and, you know, development that's requiring us to annex property. You know, most of the development we've had is utilizing our existing lot inventory structure. So, at some point, you know, if things continue to keep up like they are, I expect that we'd see some, you know, requests for new plats and different things like that. So, we had 19 applications in front of the planning commission, staff reviewed 145 city land use applications. Those are, you know, fences, patios, sheds, those sorts of things that aren't building permits, however you do still need to get a permit for checking setbacks, lot coverage, et cetera. Building permits, 113 of those required zoning review. A lot of that is obviously the larger projects, but also additions and things like that to properties where we have to make sure things are being met. Signed permits, and then also had 28 pre-development application meetings. That has picked up, you know, the amount of interest we're getting, I guess, in the community from developer, construction folks to build. And we've had several meetings with those folks to talk about projects.
And Dan, on the scanning, do you still have to keep the paper copies, or will you?
Nope. Those are shredded. Everything we've done meets the statutory requirements as basically the original copy. I believe a similar thing was done several years ago with like the old council packets. Those were all scanned. And basically, the database is such that they can't be modified or changed, and it meets all the requirements.
So, in the future, you'll just enter them electronically?
Yep. Yeah, I should've mentioned that. So, now when we issue a building permit, we'll print a hard copy for the applicant, and then our staff just saves a copy, and it saves automatically to the address file. So, we're saving a step of having to print it and file it manually or print it and scan it. It's all an integrated process.
There's also benefit for the property owners, too, if they...
Sure.
Come and look up information.
Yeah. You know, we can now take a thumb drive or a DVD or what have you and save a whole bunch of information on that. And if somebody wants that information, and it's, we're able to give it out if it's public information, it's a lot easier for us to do that. So, I think it's certainly a step in the right direction. Some of the initiatives that I've talked about for 2019 here is determining the best approach for possible zoning subdivision ordinance update. I did mention that last year, and then it was something that we didn't move into because of some of the other priorities that the city had determined through the strategic planning process. So, what I would like to do is determine, you know, what the best approach is to update the zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance. I'm thinking that it's probably best to have a professional consultant come in and look at it, review it, and determine what we wanna do from there. We'd also like to do a builder and developer survey. You know, we get feedback, both positive and negative. Obviously, as probably many zoning and building departments do, we'd like to engage our development and building community and find out, you know, some of the things that we do well, some of the things that we could do better, and things that would maybe make their life easier. Obviously, realizing that there are, you know, building codes and zoning laws that need to be followed for the protection of everybody. So, one of the other items we're looking at is an electronic plan review platform. That would be an opportunity for builders or maybe more so even on the commercial side of construction. We get a lot of plans electronically, PDF format or otherwise, and there's software out there that would allow us to do the plan review electronically and provide comments in a much more efficient manner. And then also, along those lines, is we'd like to have a system in place that folks could apply for a building permit online and then attach their plans to that and submit electronically. Again, just trying to make things more efficient in that manner. Just a little bit on 2019 outlook. Like I said, the local economy continues to be strong. These are some of the projects that I've just quickly put together here for this year. Hutch Health, we approved that project last month, about a $16 million project. Woodstone Edition is on the docket for this evening. That's potentially about a $3.5 million project. Highfield Apartments has more going in. KFC redevelopment, we've got plans in for that. I understand that the anchor tenant there will be Jimmy John's. Also, a Sport Clips franchise, I understand, is going to be located within that building. Century Court, too, there's an opportunity for more buildings to be built there. Currently, they've got three buildings permitted. Understand if that goes well, they would do more. Target is looking at remodeling and upgrading their store. It's about $1 million. And then, based on what we anticipate with residential development, you know, that's probably another $5 million valuation. So, I know as Matt's talked about before, when this value is added to the community, it benefits everybody because some of the tax rates and such don't have to be adjusted as much because we're adding new value. Talk a little bit more about rental inspections, and then you can ask any questions you have. Like I noted before, we took this over in 2014. You know, there's a stack of codes that's probably two feet high that regulates rental units. Really, the bottom line is we're trying to focus on life safety issues. We're not trying to be, you know, getting every little thing. Obviously, if it's a major thing or a violation that needs to be addressed, our folks will address it. Like I said, we're caught up on that. It is no small task. We've got over 1,900 rental units within the community. We've actually identified probably over 100 that hadn't been on the list with the help of not only our staff looking at county documents to see what properties are homesteaded and not homesteaded, also help of Hutchinson Utilities and some of the data that they have that's, we can share with them that tells us who's renting property and who owns property. And again, that's been helpful so that everybody can be on the same page and understanding which of these units need to be inspected. We do a three-year cycle on the rental inspection units. Previously, going back to the fire department days, there were ABC kind of titled inspections. They weren't even. Some would have, you know, way more inspections in it than the others. So, over the last year, we worked to even that workload with our staff so that we're doing, you know, a third, basically a third every year. Obviously, that makes sense from a workload standpoint. I've talked about this before, but you know, the benefits of the program are, is hopefully we're being proactive in saving people's lives because they had a smoke detector, a CO detector, you know, it's trying to get to something before, you know, a fire department or police department is getting there and trying to save somebody from a burning building or an unsafe situation. Generally speaking, with a rental inspection program, you see increased property values. People are keeping their properties up better. Then we're also providing documentation on the condition of these buildings to make sure that things are being met and that we're protecting not only the landlords, but also the tenants in that instance, and the neighbors. This is our rental inspection chart. It's been fairly consistent here. We did almost 800 inspections last year. You'll notice there, there's no 2017 there. Now, when we were behind, we were, it used to be that it would be the 2014, for instance, inspection kind of sequence. Well, since we were behind, we were doing the 2014 inspections probably in 2015. So, instead of trying to chase that, we just decided that we're gonna include what we do in the actual year. So, 2017 isn't there, and from now on, it'll be whatever we inspect that year. So, there's a little bit of a, again, it's not consistent on the data, but you can see, generally speaking, we've been looking at about the same amount of units per year over the last six years or so. This is a little bit of the overview. There's 168 total rental properties inspected. About half of those are a little more than half required reinspection. And then the units we inspected, again, was a 758. So, for instance, if somebody has a single-family house, that's one unit, and we could be looking at a 40 or 50-unit apartment building, and that's obviously 40 or 50 units. Of the 758 units that we looked at, 146 had no violations. So, obviously, that's a fair amount of units that did have violations. These are the top ones that we had. And quite honestly, the most of them are the smoke detectors is by far the most common. I will say that it's improving. I think with the consistency of ours, looking at these properties, people are realizing that we're gonna be checking, and, you know, they should have their smoke detectors working, electrical system, and then carbon monoxide. So, again, these are simple life safety things. You know, in a lot of ways, if, you know, folks know the inspector's coming, it's real easy to just check to make sure your smoke detector's working or your CO detector's working. But for whatever reason, it seems like we're still running into a fair amount that have issues. So, with that, open it up to any questions you might have about the report.
Dan, you wanna mention who you have on staff?
Sure. I can pull up a title slide here. We had a list of who that is. And obviously, I'm the department director. Kyle Dimler is the building official. Ken Nelson's our building inspector. He was one of the employees we hired last, about a year ago, actually, in March. Dave Holquist is also a building inspector. Those gentlemen both were in the construction industry for well over 20 years and moved over, decided to move over into the code side and have been working towards getting all their required certifications and such. And then Andrea Schwartz is our building permit technician. You see her up at the front desk. Madison Newcomb helps us out as well as the EDA. And then also, kind of a little bit of an outlier, but JJ Verhey is our facilities manager. He'll actually back up on some of the inspection pieces for us in a pinch as well.
Dan, you know, some of the staff also works with Jimon on his inspections, too, don't they?
Yes. We do work very closely with the fire department on not only the apartment building, the large units with their fire inspections and rental inspections, but also the larger commercial properties and the, you know, there's a whole bunch of issues, or not issues, but items that need to be addressed with storage and fire exiting and smokes or fire suppression systems and such. So, we have a good working relationship with the fire department, police department, really all the departments that we need to.
So, Dan, is all that information that those building inspectors gather, is that now electronically stored, you know?
It's not, it's electronically stored in our system. It's not like on the website, for instance, to get to from the public, but we can access that from our system. Where years ago, we had just checklists, and we had them paper copied. Now, we can easily run reports on, okay, how many fire alarm violations did we have, or how many electrical violations? So, that's all in our BSNA permitting system.
So, if I'm a person who is moving into a rental, I have, I can get that information to know what the building inspection has been done?
Yeah. Generally speaking, it's public information. You know, we have to go through a process to make sure that people are filing the right paperwork to request the data. And then typically, Mark reviews it to make sure there's no private information, and then we can release that information to the person wanting it.
Well, is there a sticker provided for the property? Like, again, if somebody is renting that, that they're aware that the property had been inspected and when?
Yeah. There's a certificate that we provide to the owner.
Okay.
And it's not like anything posted, per se, but it's really, you know, the land...
Some do post it, though.
Some do, yeah. Generally speaking, the landlords will provide that information to the tenant.
Well, I just wanna say, you know, when you see the type of things that are looked at now, like I said, it's a lot broader than it was before, which really focused like smoke detectors, CO detectors, where now it gets into some of those building things and life safety.
Yep.
And it's really, it's really good to see. Just helps to show the value of that. So, I just wanna... So, I just wanna say thanks to you and Dave, you know, it sounds like, looks like he's doing a good job.
Well, thank you. And what we always tell folks is, you know, we can't pick and choose which ordinances we're gonna enforce and not enforce. If it's on the books and it's adopted, you know, we enforce it. You know, obviously, there's a discretion used whether or not it's a violation or not, but if it's a violation, they get noted on it, and we're fair, so.
Do you have some properties, as you get into the system more, that are habitually having issues? Would you accelerate or maybe do yearly reinspections?
You know, there's some properties that have more issues than others, but really, we'll look at it as we need to. If we need to go back in because they're not clearing the violations, then we look at it. If, you know, once they're cleared, if we're not getting complaints, then they're just on the cycle like anybody else is, so.
Is the requirement for radon, like if somebody's renting a basement or?
I don't know off the top of my head what those requirements are, and I don't believe that our rental unit, we're not testing for radon or anything like that. I'd have to double check.
There's any requirements to do it, so.
I know that parents that have kids living here, going to Ridgewater College, rent in town here, really appreciate that we do do inspections to make sure their kids are safe. I know that's a pretty big deal, and heard horror stories from places, and I'm sure that you've seen some bad ones when you were in school.
There's some doozies out there.
We'll just leave it at that. Anything else for Dan?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You know, since we have the people here from Woodstone, I think I'm gonna jump down and do that one right away under new business. Resolution 15017, resolution adopting findings and facts, reason for approval of conditional use permit, site plan review for 38-unit addition to Woodstone Senior Living located at 1025 Dale Street Southwest.
Yes, what we have this evening, there's several items in front of you. We have some revised resolutions. I made a couple tweaks to the language on the resolutions. I believe you have those. And then also, we have an ordinance for the rezoning. So, the first one I'll talk about is the conditional use permit and site plan approval. So, Woodstone is requesting conditional use permit, site plan approval for the 38-unit addition to their building over off of Dale Street. The planning commission reviewed that last Tuesday night and unanimously recommended approval with the noted conditions. There were some discussions had regarding drainage on the property line that I believe we have a good handle on. Screening was also discussed. There's a plan to screen the adjacent single-family neighborhood from the apartment building. There's some traffic that goes in off of Cleveland Avenue. That's the main entrance, so there'll be a, the existing Woodstone will still go off of Dale Street. The new side will be off of Cleveland. There's a turnaround for emergency vehicles, so really, that part of it's pretty straightforward. Any questions on, I guess, that first resolution on the site plan and conditional use permit? Okay, the second piece of it is resolution approving the vacation of the existing utility easement and roadway easement in place. So, when the original building was built, there needed to be an easement over a water main because of the old, the first development plan was for a single-family development, and there was initially a street that was gonna go across that whole property, and that plan changed. So, now, we have to vacate part of that old easement, and it gets rerouted, and the new easement is on the plat that you approved last month. So, that's pretty straightforward. And also, the existing cul-de-sac, that's a temporary cul-de-sac on the end of Cleveland Avenue. We will be vacating that portion of it, and then the whole driveway and turnaround area will be a, basically a public easement for right-of-way purposes or right-of-way easement so that traveling public can turn around in there if necessary. So, that's the second piece. And then, we have the first reading of the rezoning ordinance tonight. There's a portion of the property where the pond is located. That was a kind of a landlocked parcel from the original Welcome to Our Home addition. That was Outlet B. That just kinda sat there. The developer decided that it would be a good opportunity to utilize that for their ponding needs and some open space, so that was combined into the lot last month with the plat, and now it needs to be rezoned to be consistent with the R4 zoning that the rest of the site is. So, I believe I hit all three of the items there, and if you have any questions, certainly let me know.
Can we, the motion to approve? Can we do all three?
Yeah, you can do all three. Like I said, the only thing I'll note is ordinance 17, or 19795 will come back at the next meeting for the second and final option, but there's, if the council wants to, there's no, there's nothing wrong with approving all three in the same motion.
I'll second it.
By Steve, second by Chad. Approve all three. Any other discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, carried. Roman, do you have anything to add?
If you want, you can.
Yeah, why don't you? As long as you waited patiently, I'll give you the opportunity.
I mean, why not come in when you get a chance to see the new police chief? You know, that was a pretty impressive support, by the way. She'd be happy about that, so. Good evening, everybody, Mr. Mayor and council members.
Oh, come on, Roman, you know the drill.
Yeah, I know. All right, name, rank, and serial number. Roman Blamke from 760 Robert Street Southwest here in Hutchinson.
Thank you.
I am the, one of the co-owners of Woodstone Senior Living. I also have Sarah Work here. She's one of the other co-owners, and then our dad is also part of the third person of that ownership group. First and foremost, we just gotta give some serious thanks to Jill Springer, who's our executive director at Woodstone. Without her leadership and the staff that work at that building, we're not even talking about this next project here. So, it's due to her and her staff that have allowed us to make this opportunity available. We employ right now around 50 people with this program. We'll be adding probably another five people to the program, so we'll have between 55 and 60 employees at the community there, which is really good. So, this community is designed for active living for adults over the age of 60. It's really for people who want fewer responsibilities but are not really ready for the traditional senior living community that exists within our community. Some of the amenities that we'll have in there, we'll have a movie theater, several social gathering spaces. We call it a pub room, but it's not really an alcohol room. It's just a game room for a place for people to go and sit and watch the game, that kind of stuff. So, I don't wanna get any misunderstanding over what's going on in that room, but there'll be pool tables and shuffleboard tables, stuff like that in there too, so there'll be a nice space there. We also have a wellness center upstairs, so people will be able to be active and healthy upstairs. And then, we have an outdoor patio area with a fireplace and grill that will be out there, so we'll be able to have, you know, evening grills in the summer, if summer ever comes. So, there'll be that, and then all the residents that live in the community will also have access to continental breakfast every day too, so be able to get up in the morning, go hang out with some of their friends, and get breakfast, so there's that. As we mentioned, it's an active living community, so it's going to rely heavily on activities going on in the building, things to do. And I was here during the workshop earlier and listening to you guys talk about the senior center and some of the activities that are going on there. We fully anticipate partnering with them as well. Also, looking at the park and rec department for utilizing swim exercises in the new pool area as well here that we have in town. So, there'll be a lot of things, you know, biking trips and road trips, educational tours, physical activities, all those kinds of things. So, we anticipate that being a pretty heavy group that's willing to go out and do stuff. So, whether it's trips to the Twins game or just simply get on a bike and utilizing the trails that we have here in town, we think it's gonna be a great option, so. As we mentioned, the building is approximately 48,000 feet, square feet. It's about $3.5 million to build the building. We have a mix of one- and two-bedroom apartments. There'll be 25 two-bedroom apartments in there and 13 one-bedroom apartments. And then, each one will have either a patio or a deck on there as well, so there'll be some outside space to enjoy the weather that should come eventually for us here, so. With that, any questions that you guys might have about the community?
Do you have a waiting list or?
Well, we're working on it right now. Jill's been dealing with some people who are pretty interested in coming over, so we're excited about that, so. You know, as we start getting going and are able to get, you know, footings in the ground and those kinds of things, we expect that to pick up quite a bit too, so.
I had interest until you said there was no pub in the pub.
That's on you guys, not on me. We'll just leave it at that.
I think it's a good fit for the community. I really do.
Well, we're excited about it. You know, we're a family-run organization. As I mentioned, it's my sister and my dad doing this. We've been doing this since 1994, and it's honestly one of the best jobs you could have. You get to hang out with a bunch of grandmas and grandpas all day long, and that's pretty cool. I'll take that all day long, so. We're excited to get over there and get started, so. And like I said, if it wasn't for Jill and her staff, we wouldn't be talking about this at all, so they deserve a bunch of praise over this too, so.
Well, we appreciate you choosing Hutch.
Yeah, well, we love Hutchinson. It's awesome to be here, so.
How much are rents on the facility?
Well, that's a good question. Are you interested in moving in? We can talk offline later if you want. It'll be cheaper than what the current assisted living prices are right now. A little bit probably, it'll be higher than what your regular base rate in a regular apartment building is, mainly because of the activities that'll be going on in there, and then also food and stuff like that too. So, it'll be a little bit higher than a regular apartment, but significantly under what assisted living costs, so.
Well, it sounds like you have a lot of amenities for the people that are there.
Yeah, we don't really have that in town. One of the things that we talked about when we started designing this is I would like to have something to go to when I get to that age. I'm not quite there at this point, but, you know, I wanna have somewhere where I can go to, and it gets there and it has what I need, so, you know, that pub area, we're gonna talk about that down the road. Just kidding. No, but, you know, having the opportunity to have a gathering space for people to get together and watch games, or, you know, it's not quite like our building in Wisconsin where they get together and have tailgates for the Packers games. They're a little bit more aggressive on that than we are, but, you know, opportunity to get together, and I know there's, in some of our other buildings, we've had residents get together that wanna watch the Twins and stuff like that, so why not have a viewing party and stuff? So, those kinds of things are really exciting.
And age requirement?
60 plus, yep.
Oh, right. Oh, we're there.
Speak for yourself.
Well, you know, there's a lot of people that are looking forward to getting rid of the day-to-day grind of owning a house.
Evidently, you must have been listening to my wife.
Listening to my parents, you know, at this point. What can we get rid of so we don't have to do anything anymore? So, you know, you just think about that, and people wanna, you know, I use my dad as an example, they wanna start talking about traveling too, and where do they wanna go? And a house kinda ties you down from that standpoint as well, so they wanna be able to do those kinds of things, and I know they're not the only ones that are out there that are like that too.
Okay, I know one question that's gonna come up.
Yeah.
Pets, most seniors.
We've talked about that, yeah, we've talked about that. There's some studies out there that pets do a lot for seniors. We've talked about what are we gonna do at Woodstone currently? The residents that we have in the current Woodstone building are, the problem with having pets in that building is that the people that live in there are high-care residents, so being able to go out and take a dog out and those kinds of things for a walk becomes a little bit tougher. But that is something that we're discussing for the new building, is how can we incorporate that in there, so. We'll see how that kinda flushes out here over the next couple months, so.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yep, not a problem. Thank you, guys.
Boy, he looks attractive too, Roman.
Yeah, we're very excited about it. Thank you.
All right, review of South Grade Road Corridor Improvement Project, winning number two, project number 19-18. Evening, Ken.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Mark is passing out a couple of items that we received just recently. The one drawing is a replacement of the drawing that was included in the council packet, and I will bring that up on the screen here shortly. This is a project that encompasses all of South Grade Road, not all of it, but from Oakland down the east end and then to the west of this area to the Dale Street intersection. We've been developing this project for many years now, probably moving on almost year four at this point. There's a lot of moving parts to this project. We touched on it a few months ago when I brought the two SRF studies that primarily focused on, well, not primarily, but did focus on this segment here between Merrill Street on the west end and Oakland Avenue on the east end over by Walgreens, trying to clean up the dynamics of the Highway 15 and South Grade Road intersection, and then looking at the intersection of Cashwise Mall entrance area there, and then tying into Merrill Street and trying to make some pedestrian crossing improvements at that point. So, what's in front of you is what I'll call the final design layout, and SRF consulting, you may remember, council approved a consulting agreement with them a few months back. We were fortunate enough that they had some staff time available and were able to get moving on this project from a design standpoint. There's a lot of approvals are required of the city with MINDOT and the state highway being involved. We have to do an intersection control evaluation, a NICE report. We have to do a formal layout because some of the curb lines are changing within the trunk highway right of way there at Highway 15. And then, with respect to the roundabout concept that we've arrived at, and we talked a fair amount about that last time when I presented the two SRF studies to council, that requires a roundabout justification report that gets blessed by the local district MINDOT office. So, MINDOT's highly involved. Obviously, there needs to be some coordination between the two intersections and how they function. The signal system and the controls of the signal system at Highway 15 are extremely dated. It's an outdated program that MINDOT has difficulties maintaining and operating at this point in time. There were some rather significant issues with it and its performance last fall. You probably noticed it was on four-way stop rather frequently, I guess. And, yeah, so now's the time to address this. The other handout provided to you is our local partnership program award letter, and that we just received last week. So, what that tells us, and we applied for two different projects, but the one relative to this area is basically half of the signal system, funding half of the signal system at Highway 15 and South Grade Road. MINDOT, not that this project was sprung upon them, but they did not have funding allocated for their half of the signal system. So, they encouraged the city to apply for the local partnership dollars to fund basically $125,000 of the $250,000 signal system. Two legs of it, sir. Two legs of the intersection are city jurisdiction, and then obviously, the north-south is trunk highway. And that's, how signal systems get shared is well-established, not only in MINDOT policy, I think it's actually established in state law, so, in statute. So, we're fortunate to have that money come our direction. We've also received $600,000 in local road improvement program funding for this corridor. The scope of that project has changed a little bit since we applied. We've had discussions with MINDOT. MINDOT is comfortable with the changes in scope. They actually believe this mini-roundabout approach is ideal, I guess, and unique. There's been success with mini-roundabouts across the country, more so out on the east coast, Ohio, and Pennsylvania, that area. There's been a fair number of them built. There's two of them built on the state highway, Highway 4 through St. James, that have been very successful. We've had discussions with representatives down in that area. MINDOT was, led the design of those two roundabouts, mini-roundabouts in St. James, and they have nothing but good things to say.
Ken, can you maybe, at least for the public, explain the difference between the mini-roundabout concept and, I guess, the roundabouts that we see currently in town?
Smaller. Nah. Yeah, basically, a mini-roundabout is surmountable. It's smaller in footprint circumference, but it is, what you notice with the crosshatching on the colored pink median, red, I guess, the crosshatching denotes that that's surmountable. So it'll have a beveled curb. Trucks will be able to make movements on that area, you know, wider turning movements. A typical roundabout is fully curved, you know, all the islands are the splitter islands, the medians, and then the center island also is curved, albeit there's a mountable truck apron on most normal-sized roundabouts, similar to, both of them on Highway fifteen have fairly large truck aprons associated with them. So, yeah, yeah. To answer Matt's question, yeah, that's kind of the simple response, it's smaller, obviously, but the functionality of these really is for intersections that have a fair amount of traffic. You know, typically intersections that are either three-way stop conditions or four-way stop conditions that you want to improve traffic flow, or you have a long turning movement and a variety of turning movements, and that's what we have here, is basically, we have a lot of movements, left-turn movements, and with the number of turning lanes, those movements get to be rather lengthy. People get uncomfortable, especially the left exiting, egressing from the Cashwise area to head westbound. You know, basically, at that point, now you have three lanes of traffic coming at you, how it's striped today. And a lot of people, it's a lengthy movement to get across, and a lot of people are uncomfortable even when somebody's coming at them with their right signal on. They're still sitting there waiting for sure to make damn sure that they're going to turn, so. And then by the time they wait for that car, there's another one coming at them, so. Yeah, we looked at this, and it's a unique approach, it's to this area. Like I said, they've been successful, and it's been well-vetted, it's been well-studied. You know, I've second-guessed this a fair amount myself, but we keep going back to the fact if we're going to make an investment in this area with the amount of traffic and the traffic generator, Cashwise, you know, we know that's not going to go anywhere. And if that's going to be a grocery store for some time, this seems to be the wisest investment. So it's simply doing some lane reconfiguration, improve the median alignments, and you're left with the same turning movements, lengthy turning movements, variety of turning movements, and you really don't solve the safety issues that present themselves. I'll leave it at that, yeah.
What did you just say?
Well, I don't, you really don't solve the safety issues that present themselves with respect to the turning movements, the variety and the length of them.
Well, the length has been reduced, though, especially those left turns, right? So you said you don't solve.
No, with the lane reconfiguration approach.
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely, the other option, basically, yeah.
And then Lynn Road will no longer have access onto South Grade from where that, right now, there's a stop sign there.
Yes.
Right?
Yep, like I showed, exactly right, Mary. That's something that should have went away a long time ago. I've heard the backstory to it, and, believe it or not, politics apparently got involved, but, yeah. So I think now's the time for that to go away. It really has to, or else this isn't a feasible approach. Honestly, we wouldn't touch that intersection. If we want to do anything with that intersection, MINDOT's going to require that that access point goes away.
What is my little shortcut to preschool drop-off?
You can obviously probably tell what the next issue is going to be, and we are still trying to speak with Aspen Dental. We've spoken with Mr. Rannell, we've spoken with Anytime Fitness owners. Cashwise, have another meeting with Cashwise in about a week or so. The regional manager is going to come down. Everything's been favorable to this point. Aspen, you know, they got the two access points, but you can see what they lend themselves to. It's no secret, it was the same way when it was Pizza Hut, so, yeah. I mean, they can do things.
It's real fair, yeah.
They can do things to slow people down if they want to. They could look at how that Lynn Road access point is utilized, and that could be changed. Probably you can make it either ingress or an egress only, potentially, depending how they want their site to function. And, yeah, that's about it. At this point, we're really trying to position ourselves to build this this fall, to take advantage of that $600,000 in road improvement dollars. If we don't build it this year, or we're presented with the question of whether we do it next year, which the obvious answer is no, because of the Main Street project going on, not only downtown here, but Highway fifteen on the south end of town. So we're getting out into 2021, and MINDOT's kind of on the fence whether they would be, I guess, approachable to holding on to that funding for that long, so. We're trying to make this happen. There's a lot of moving parts. MINDOT reviews lead time on the signal system. The poles and mast arms are 20 to 25 weeks out, even though they're fabricated right down the road in Winstead. But that industry is really struggling to keep up right now. So now, though, we might hopefully get enough MINDOT blessings with respect to the intersection design to actually execute a purchase order where the city would purchase those poles and mast arms and then build them into the project cost, and then have, you know, the grant money that I alluded to offset MINDOT's share of that investment in the end. But, you know, we're going to run into an issue with the lead time basically being almost half a year. We need to get those ordered in September, October, so they're, well, excuse me, in April, March, April, so they're arriving in September, October, or else, yeah, snowflakes will come, and we won't be done, obviously.
How long are you expecting this project to take?
This segment actually isn't too bad because there's a good roadbed beneath this, so we don't have the full excavation. We have a little bit of storm sewer work. We don't have any sanitary sewer water, water main work. You know, moving a valve and a hydrant is about it. We estimate, this is probably, you know, and it really goes back to the signal system and the coordination of those materials arriving, but if everything's there, it's six weeks of work from fifteen to Merrill. You know, like I mentioned earlier, we're looking at the entire scope of this, if possibly deliver here, and doing the narrowing of South Grade Road and replacing the sidewalk on the north side with the trail from Merrill to Dale.
Access, you know, during the construction for the businesses and...
Yeah, like I said, this, there's going to be issues, there's other options. You know, you look at Aspen, Anytime up in that area, we're, they actually have a second driveway here that we might leave. We're looking, the Red X might go away, and we'll leave that as a right end only, and then configure some diagonal parking in front of their business. There's going to be some additional front yard, so they'll end up with two access points. Rannell, we could potentially do something where we build a temporary access off Anytime Fitness's lot as the work is in front of their sole access point. Cashwise, people have to find a new way. To Cashwise, and there's other ways to get there, obviously.
They'll find it.
And likewise, Taco Bell likewise, there's other ways to get there, so. No, it's not as bad as it looks in the end. I should have mentioned earlier, you know, with the car wash dynamic behind Cashwise, that's private property. You know, and that factored into this approach, looking to the long term, traffic could dramatically increase if that was ever redeveloped and that threw movement back there through Cashwise, not Cashwise, as the car wash property went away, which it conceivably could. So, something to keep in mind, a lot of that's being utilized quite a bit, like it or not. Like we learned a few years ago, I know Gary was involved in some discussions.
So that's not a public street?
It's not a public street in any fashion, and that could go away pretty quickly.
But you could tell last week when they didn't plow it for two days.
Yeah.
Pretty tough back there.
Yeah. So like I said, yeah, we're just, I just wanted to give you a status update, show you where we're at. There's a lot of moving parts here. Building this this fall is no guarantee by any means. If we're not able to deliver it this fall, I think, like I said earlier, we have some tough questions in front of us.
Kent, what's the, right now, the projected timeline for bidding and all of that?
Yeah, we'd like to bid at probably July, give or take, and then start construction after either late August after the pool closes or right after Labor Day.
I did go down to St. James after we talked about it in September, and got down there in the morning for the rush hour and just kind of watched, and it really worked really well. Kent mentioned, you know, the amount to build, you know, might, you know, cut the corner a little bit, but that's what it's designed for, to help with that, and, but. Talked to some of the business owners down there, people working, and they said there were questions, of course, in the beginning, but nobody thinks twice about it now. It's, they really like it. I had questions, Kent, you might mention, too, you know, about backing up possibly from the traffic light down to the roundabout, but there's... ...changes with the new system, too, is there'll be some...
Yeah, like Steve alluded to, yeah. Theoretically, there's the potential for, you know, basically stacking, significant stacking to occur in this left turn lane. You probably noticed that yourselves, and how it functions today and creeping back here. But there would be, with this signal system being improved... The loop detectors would be configured in a manner realizing how this intersection is going to function. So once this starts to back up, there'll be a loop detector here, and it's called basically a drop loop. So once it hits that, it drops everything else, and it'll open up that left turn lane, you know, to make that movement to clear it, and...
So that's where you stop Chad, so it trips.
There's multiple ones that have to be triggered at the same time, yeah. It's not yourself.
But that works the same way going west, too, right?
Yep, yep, and they can configure it in a manner that they could have a drop loop here which would drop the signal system and protect or try to minimize traffic entering this westbound South Grade Road lane. So, yeah, like Steve, there's been a lot of thought put to this, you know, modeling. We're confident in the traffic projections that really this corridor is, in essence, built out, so we don't believe there's a lot of potential for growth in traffic in this corridor. And really, the traffic's being generated by a mall area and specifically Cashwise is what's happening, so. We're confident in the modeling.
Well, you get a lot, too, though, just going west and, you know, to the arena and the aquatic center, the schools, so there's a lot of other activity there, too, but with the turning traffic, for sure.
Yeah, yeah, the total counts, yeah, it's about 9,000, give or take. We counted at just basically between the Cashwise entrance and the signal. You get this way of this intersection. I think the most recent count is 5,500, 5,800, if I remember right.
Second busiest intersection in town?
Yeah, well, this would be, this would be our second busiest segment of street in town, just a short segment between the entrance point and the signal. School road just south of Highway seven is the busiest, just short of 10,000 vehicles a day. City streetwise, obviously, the state highways are higher.
Anything else for Kent?
Yep, thank you.
All right, moving on to unfinished business. Second reading and adoption of ordinance number nineteen dash seven ninety-three, ordinance amending and replacing chapter ninety-five of the Hutchinson City Code.
Mayor and Council, obviously, this ordinance has been in front of us a couple of different times. At our last meeting earlier in February, on February 12th, you did consider a first reading of this ordinance, and you did approve a first reading of the ordinance. Obviously, we had some discussion on section ninety-five point oh-eight. That has been updated to the language that was approved at the last meeting, and as I noted, that was the previous language that was in the previous ordinance. Outside of that, there's been no other changes to the ordinance, and I'd ask the Council to consider a second reading and adoption of the ordinance. It's been properly posted as required by, actually, state law now, so.
Make a motion to approve, but then I'd like to have a discussion after, before we vote.
I'll second it.
Motion by Steve, second by Chad, to approve. Any other discussion? Yeah, I guess, you know, as I thought about our, the last discussion that we had with ninety-five oh-eight, it seemed like there was some openness to look at ways to, you know, expand or do more with the tobacco-free in areas that have more youth-oriented activities going on. So, you know, when I thought about that, then I thought, well, why not? Why can't we expand on what we've got in place here to include some of the other facilities that are really aimed at more youth activities? And so I provided you with some other language that, when I talked to Matt, you know, maybe it would be an amendment that we could add after this other one gets taken care of because there's some other projects or permits that are out there, right?
Yeah, yeah, we've got actually some interest already about renting out the shell, or the stage and the campgrounds, and as I told Steve, you know, if there's a desire to have a conversation and go back on section ninety-five point eight oh-eight, I think staff's fine with that. I would just ask that you consider adopting this ordinance right now, because like I said, we've got some rentals out there that are, we're kind of waiting to find out what the fund will be so we can move forward with that, and then we can always have a second, another discussion on a revision to the sections, so.
So for the public's standpoint, it's, you know, we did add, or this would add the electronic delivery devices, the cigarettes, but then also have a area 25 feet away from any playgrounds, and then, as it is now, within the confines of Tartan Park, but then also included Veterans Memorial Field, the baseball field, and then the ballfield areas at Roberts Park, Riverside Park, Northwoods Park, and VFW Park, and then the Aquatic Center. And, but then there was an exception for parking lots for those areas, so people could go outside of those areas if they wanted to use tobacco, but then had that same 25-foot limit or try to get away from the entrances. So I was just curious if that's something that Council would entertain to put on as an amendment later, or maybe I'll just bring it up after we do this and see where it goes then. Maybe we just call a motion, and then we can discuss...
So, maybe we just call a motion and then we can discuss what we wanna do with this, Chad? All right, I'll call a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? I guess I'm, I'm kinda, I'm fine with, with kinda having the twenty-five foot barrier from playgrounds and, you know, the park. Or when there's, you know, maybe children present or something. You know, it's, it's kinda funny, 'cause I was, I was just thinking about this when, when I'm out blowing snow, I have nothing else to think about. So, it was funny, 'cause I actually had to go put fuel in, in my tractor and sitting in Casey's. And all of a sudden, here, this car pulls up with two people in the front seat, both smoking, with two kids in the backseat, in car seats, you know, in the confines of that. It's like, geez, that's, you know, talk about secondhand smoke for poor little kids, you know?
Which isn't that illegal now, to smoke with a kid in the car, or not?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
There's been, there's been discussions on making that illegal. I don't know if it's.
Your homes and. So again, this was just a way to do it where there's more concentration of people and children, and the rest of the parks, you know, wide open, so it seemed to be a compromise. And then with the parking lots, there's an area close by that somebody could go and, and use if they wanted.
Well, and I can, obviously, you know, it's, it's not on there for any action, but I can easily bring forth a, a new ordinance that would amend for your guys' consideration.
But we'd still be passing this other one, so.
Yeah, this one's already been passed, and so it'd just be amendment to that one section, so.
So are we saying, am I getting this right? Are we saying that if we're down on the river and we're having a big function down there, we have to go to the parking lot to have a smoke?
Are you in rivers?
Nah, you know, it's River Song. I'm.
No, it's not. It, it doesn't say that park at all. Is there a ballfield area?
Ballfields and playgrounds.
As long as it's ballfields and playgrounds, I'm fine with that. You know, I mean, that to me is common sense. You know, I don't have an issue with that.
Well, I had discussion with the Huskies Board, or Board, whatever they wanna call themselves, Commission. And actually, they had no problem with the ballfield being smoking, because they ask the people to, if they wish to smoke, to be considered of others and ask them to just step out while they do that. So, it hadn't been an issue to them, and they recommended that it not be done, because they've been, for their park, because of the proximity of the parking lot as to the ballfield. They, they saw it as no problem.
What's written here would work with that then?
Well, it would work to a certain extent, except you're just saying there's no smoking in Veterans Memorial Field and around that, around that area. And all they're saying is, is that they've asked the people, if they wish to smoke, to step out beyond and then or the area around the kids. So.
But that's what, you've mentioned the parking lot.
Yeah, you're saying here, but it's just, you, you're writing it down where they've been getting their action from there, as they've been asking for it at ballgames, so. I'm just saying they were not opposed to having no smoking in the, or smoking in the ballpark.
Well, there's other people using it too, so.
And it's still.
It's the case with everything.
Yeah.
All right, Matt will bring, bring something back then.
For his question.
Yep. All righty, moving on, North Park Tennis Pickleball Court Replacement Project. Dolph, you're up.
Mayor and council, in your packet tonight, we're asking that you take a look at approving the low bid for the North Park Tennis and Pickleball Court Replacement. This has been a subject that we've kind of investigated over a strong twelve-month, well, four-year period, but stronger in the last year. Trying to have a conversation with ISD four twenty-three to possibly co-locate tennis facilities. I know the Parks Rec Community Advisory Board's been several meetings, looking at probably twelve different options of opportunity. Ultimately, that group determined that each political subdivision should do their own project on their own property, but that it probably made a lot of sense to hire one engineer to look at it. So, that's what we did. And it was a unique way to bid a project where we had five different bids, because there were a lot of combinations. What our hope was that if we could ultimately find one bidder to do both sites, that that might provide us the lowest price. In this case, it didn't, but we did get a favorable price. In fact, it was within a thousand dollars of the engineering estimate, which was nice. Probably the unfortunate thing about the whole process was we weren't able to do a Batumina Surface Court there because of soil conditions. But what that ultimately led us to was be able to have a post-tension concrete option, which will last much longer in the long haul, because we needed to address the soil concerns in the area. So, we have a low bidder of our, our excavating at five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars. It would be a re-total makeover of the facility. It would put the court, right now, they're at two different levels. It'd put them all on one level surface. It would address the drainage issues in and around the site. It would address the issues around the shelter that's there for the winter months in that we'd have a nice eight-foot apron all the way around that building. It puts in a couple little retaining walls. It works on some site drainage. So, at the end of the day, we have a pretty clean site. We're able to expand the number of pickleball courts from the current four to seven, which, because we seen, have seen a lot of increased participation in that, will be a nice addition. And yet, we'll still have four tennis courts that'll be able to be used by the general public and one of our big partners there, which is the middle-level tennis program that the school provides to, to its students. So, I don't know if there's specific questions. It's a pretty full packet. We're kind of excited about the post-tension concrete option, just because of its longevity going into the future to help minimize maintenance costs.
I was happy to see the drainage piece of it. There's quite a bit of work with that. And that seemed to be really important with that type of a product, that you have good drainage. You know, it's more expensive, but we had three hundred and fifty thousand in the capital improvement plan for the paving, but that didn't count in the soil, which would have been another two hundred thousand.
Yeah, and that's where we really, I would say, our cost.
Escalated.
Escalated. It was not realizing the soil corrections that were gonna be.
Yeah, including the packet, Andy Reed suggesting where the funding source should come from. I think it makes a good amount of sense. You know, what we're talking about's a half-century fix here. So, over time, it wouldn't seem to be, I know it's real money, but it seems to be a kind of a minimal, minimal cost. Our other option is, if we don't do this, we will be forced to shut that facility down, because there are tripping hazards that are just getting kind of worse by the season. And once the snow all melts off what we got going, it'll probably be interesting to see what the deflections in the, in the court surface are. So, I, I mean, it, it's time to, to do this project.
So, what staff is recommending for financing, obviously, we had budgeted three hundred and fifty thousand in the, in the facilities plan, of which, you know, this project gets paid for. But then to take the remaining, is it a hundred and eighty-seven, out of our community improvement fund? If you recall, that's where we put the non-designated remainder of the hospital money that we had, kind of for future community projects, of which we feel this is one.
I don't mind doing the project. My only question is, and I don't mind using the money from the community improvement fund, but looking at the facilities plan, you know, in the outgoing years, the fund is healthy even with that deficit. So, I mean, it, it incorporates that in there, so why, why don't we just borrow from that, the community improvement fund and then pay it back the next year? There's, like I said, the balance already is including that deficit, if you wanna call it that. So I don't see the reason why we have to transfer it permanently. We don't need it, at least right now, anyway. Temporarily, borrow, yeah.
It's possible. I think our, the one concern that we have is the rec center roof. We don't know exactly what that's gonna, what that price is gonna come in at.
Then you could come, we could consider that if that's the case.
I think the other piece that gets to be, you know, a little slippery is these out-year projects tend to expand in cost, and, you know, granted, we look at the numbers every year, you know, but a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar lighting project, which is in the out-years, might be three-quarters of a million dollars. So there, you're rolling out another hundred thousand out of the equation. And, and I get, and I get what you're saying, but, you know, it's things, you know, it's a, it's probably not as straightforward as maybe roads even. There's a lot of moving parts.
I, I guess I would say this, Steve, we can do, I think that the concern would be, and at least is, so this council's aware of it, we've got some other projects that are coming down the road that we, we don't, we have a good estimate, but, you know, just like we thought we had a good estimate with the tennis, and so if there's the opportunity, because what we don't wanna do is we, we push projects back with, with the Aquatic Center, and so that's our, our one concern. If you keep pushing stuff back, that.
And I'm not saying that. I mean, you might come back, or we might see some of those projects. We might need more than that. So, right now, we don't need anything. That's all I'm saying. But if we do, then, you know, we can work with it. But looking forward, based on the estimates we have, it's good.
I guess I would say that's good for us to hear, 'cause I think that's, we're trying to, trying to play with what we've got, you know, without, if you wanna say forcing an issue, you know, just, I think we're trying to be prudent with that, and, and we know that we run into some struggles. That's.
Good to know.
Something to bring back. It's, that's fair.
Dolph, when's the last time we did any work on those courts?
Um, yeah, it's, it's been a long history. Two thousand and three, there was an improvement. The Tennis Association did a thirty thousand dollar improvement back in nineteen ninety-four. Over the course of time, from nineteen seventy-five to the present, there's probably been about two hundred thousand dollars of repair work that's occurred on that site. And it just never really got it to the shape that it should be. I mean, it's been a little bit of a dysfunctional site for a very long time. This, I think, puts us on some very solid footing for the next half-century.
Kept putting Band-Aids on some that should've had major surgery.
Yes.
Might mention this, this will level it off too, where it's not too.
Yeah, not two levels.
Yeah. How long would this project take?
Uh, yeah, the, the window of opportunity would be the middle of April until the middle of July. The school also will be doing a, a project. Their, their project will start after school lets out and the, the school's tennis season's over, and then their project will run until virtually Labor Day. So, for about a six-week window, there'll be no tennis available in the community, but it's gonna be kind of some short-term pain for like a longer-term gain. The nice thing is, is it's two different kind of general contractors on the project, but the people that'll be doing the post-tension concrete will be working for both R and R and Dunick, who've got the school's bid.
And the idea would be that they'd be up and ready for next season?
Next, yes, the next competitive season. The Park Elementary Site would be earlier, followed by the school site a little bit later.
Pickleball, how does that work? You said we have four courts, but then they're gonna have how many?
There'll be seven total. So there'll be three, three of the courts that'll be striped. There'll have two pickleball courts on each tennis court, and then one pickleball court will be able to be used at any time by the general public. The other six courts would need to have netting that's set up. And I've had numerous meetings with the pickleball-playing community, and they have no problem with being able to put up portable nets. They'll just, we'll store them in that facility there. They'll have access. They play at very consistent times. Their biggest concern was if there were kind of novice pickleball players, that there'd be a court available to be played on that didn't require a group of people having to send a net out.
So no one was ever a novice pickleball player?
A novice pickleball?
None of them were ever novices?
They all go to Arizona during the winter, and they get really good at it, and then they come back.
Just drive by there and watch them. They're good.
They're good.
I'm waiting to hear from the pickleball players.
And they've really, you know, that, that's just a real growth area. You know, we have four courts now at the Recreation Center. The Fairgrounds has courts available. And the age keeps driving down too. It's just not an old person's game. There's starting to be some thirty-somethings that are grabbing a racket and playing the games, so it's good.
And if they had their, you know, wildest dreams, they'd have dedicated courts.
And we, and we've had a conversation, and they've been involved in the Park Master Planning, and that, you know, pickleballs come up, and there's places that have just dedicated pickleball courts. I said, you know, you keep growing, that's a potential for the future. But right now, we gotta take care of the facility we have, and maybe not the one we don't have.
It's a good project.
Yeah.
It's your pleasure.
I would ask the council if, with your proven, you know, I'm, I'm fine with it all coming out of the, uh, facilities fund. Just wanna acknowledge, we've got a, a roof project that may have to be the one that we then ask the council for some additional funds. Just, we're just kinda waiting to, it's not one of those projects we've been pushing back for years too, so.
It's fine. I'd make that a motion to approve and understanding that might be opportunities going forward.
I'll second that.
Motion by Steve, second by Chad to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?
Thank you.
Thanks, Dolph. Minnesota DOT District Eight Local Partnership Program Grant Application.
All right, if you read the packet, this is a little bit after the fact, but I wanted to bring this to your attention, and I guess, yeah, the lead time I received on the grant application, Smidl was very short, and then they turned around the, the award pretty quickly, though. Like I alluded to earlier, the letter that was handed out not only awarded the South Grade Road Traffic Signal Funding, but also our Trunk Highway Seven side. but also our Trunk Highway Seven Sidewalk and Trunk Highway Fifteen Trail improvements, so, yeah, I won't spend a whole lot of time on the signal. Like I mentioned earlier, basically, the, uh, what we're requesting in the application was half of the signal cost, a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars. That might change based on actual bid amount, so there's some flexibility there with that funding. But, you know, all these, these grants are based on cost estimations, so when the actual bids come in, some might be higher, some might be lower, and there might be, if you're on the higher side, there might be some funding that's still sitting in the pot that could absorb that additional cost. So with that, I'll touch on just quickly the sidewalk and trail work that we were fortunate enough to receive funding for, and within the application, I requested fifty percent of about three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar construction cost, and I should mention, this funding can only be utilized for construction. Oh, excuse me. There we go. North is to the top of the page. Anyways, and the, on the west end is Fifth Avenue Northeast. This is the cul-de-sac that terminated Fifth Avenue Northeast a few years ago, already almost fifteen years ago, twelve years ago or so, when the Highway Seven Reconstruction Project was administered. So, yeah, that, that intersection with Highway Seven went away with Fifth Avenue Northeast. The cul-de-sac was built, and what, what was built at that time was a sidewalk along the north side of Highway Seven, and then it ties into the very end of the cul-de-sac on Fifth Avenue and the, the existing sidewalk on, on Fifth Avenue that's been there for some time. What this project would do is, would pick up the sidewalk of the north side and just continue, continue east. This is the Michigan Street intersection, then all the way down to the TDK Upner Access Road, which we're examining to turn into a public roadway. There would not be a sidewalk going up, up that roadway by any means. There's just not the width there. The original design is basically a rural section, and there really is not the, the roadway bed to, to accommodate a sidewalk. You would, you would have to do a drastic change to that roadway and how it functions from a drainage standpoint to accomplish a sidewalk or any sort of pedestrian facility up into the TDK Upner area. So, yeah, relatively straightforward. There's some trees out there, some lights, some signs on that, that north side. We're trying to situate the sidewalk to avoid those as much as possible. We're not sure if all of it'll be separated from the roadway with the grass boulevard or not. There might be some areas that are, the sidewalk is directly behind the curb, and there might be some areas where it is off the curb, and might even be on the backside of the, the trees that exist out there today. Yeah, and this is really about the limits of the design effort that's been put into this as we prepared for the draft, for the grant application. So we're, yeah, we put some rough numbers to it. I think we developed a pretty good cost estimate, but we really need to get into the, the gory details now and iron out the design. These are twenty-twenty-one funds that have been allocated, so you can advance construct, so what that means, basically, the city could build this earlier, pay for it with their own funds, and then be refunded in twenty-twenty-one. Any questions on that one? Thoughts?
It's nice with the hotel and the car dealership out there, and, but especially the hotel, I see that, and having a safe way to move around a little bit.
Yeah, entering and exiting town, you know, I take Highway Seven to go back to Waconia, but, you know, I see a few people walking. I, I see a young gentleman basically walking every morning. I don't know if you've noticed that. I'm not sure where he's going. I haven't figured that out yet, but, yeah, he's walking either on the roadway shoulder. Most often, he's off in the boulevard, the grass area. Granted, it's awful difficult this time of year. And there's plenty of roadway width there and roadway shoulder. The road was somewhat overdesigned years ago. We, we don't have any intentions to approach Minot to narrow the road to buy us additional boulevard. I know what the answer would be to that, but, you know, you could walk on-street, I think relatively comfortably, but it is a state highway, and really, there should be a pedestrian facility out that direction. All right, the other one is Trunk Highway Fifteen. You can turn it north, it's on the, the S curve there. Existing trail coming up from South Grade Road area by a diner realty, and then starts to be in the, the S curve along the westerly side of Highway Fifteen. That trail ends at Lynn Road, transitions into an existing sidewalk. As it continues, well, it ends at Grove, excuse me, continues through the east and then ultimately turns back to the north. Sidewalk obviously continues all the way through downtown on both sides of Highway Fifteen. We're proposing to basically replace that sidewalk that, I can't remember if that, that might even be a four-foot walk out there, something that's fairly dated, so relatively narrow sidewalk with a ten-foot bituminous blacktop trail. There's some trees, there's a little bit of right-of-way. We might have to pick up a trail easement or two just around some property corners at some of the intersections. Things get tight, so, nothing major. We've done trail easements in the past where we have to cut a corner and, and compensate a property owner with a little bit of funds, so. I think it's very, very feasible, and like I said, it was part of the overall cost of totaling three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. This would tie in to, tie that trail system into the bicycle-friendly route on Linden, so that's really the connection. And then, obviously, the, the evolution of the brewery in that area has kind of changed some dynamics there. Not that a lot of people, I don't think, are biking there, but breweries lend themselves to, to biking activity, it seems.
I think a lot of people actually do bike to the brewery.
Okay, I haven't noticed it much, so, yeah.
In the summertime.
First year.
And a lot of people just walk there, too.
Yep. So, yeah, I think this is a worthwhile facility. We have an opportunity here, somewhat in conjunction with the highway project in twenty-twenty, where they would build the pad ramps. They were gonna be replacing all the pedestrian ramps on the sidewalk system anyways, so they would replace those in a manner that they're wide enough to accommodate a trail. So, if there's any questions on that, that's really what we applied for, and like I said, we were fortunate enough to, to get the funding. I should mention, and this really applies to the South Grade Road intersection, these are trunk highway dollars. They're cooperative agreement dollars, used to be the terminology, that are, come out of the trunk highway federal, basically, gas tax dollars. So, there's a fair amount of process with these dollars. They don't come easily, but, yeah, we've, they're the same dollars that we utilized for the retaining wall just by Faes and Georgia's place there a few years back. We received two-hundred-thousand dollars to build that retaining wall within Minot's right-of-way. So, there's a little bit of process. It concerns me somewhat on the signal system front, if we advance construct, like I mentioned, and deliver that project in twenty-nineteen, if we can get through the process to capture those dollars this fall. But we're gonna do our best and see what happens.
Anything else for Kent?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
Thank you.
First reading of ordinance number nineteen-dash-seven-ninety-four, ordinance establishing a sustainability board.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, council members. As you may recall, over the past year, year and a half or so, we have talked about creating one board that would make recommendations to the city council on matters of sustainability in the community and how to best use our environmental resources. And so before you tonight is a first reading of an ordinance that might take a step towards accomplishing that. The first part of the ordinance basically gives reasoning for the creation of the Sustainability Board, and then the latter half of the ordinance talks about how the board would be made up and who could be a member of it, things of that nature. But basically, those points in a nutshell are that, and I have suggested, and none of these things are set in stone, this is just a starting point for you to consider, but I suggested having the board comprised of five people. One who would be a city council member, or could be a city council member, and one who could also be a utilities commissioner, and then the remaining three other at-large members could be members either of the City of Hutchinson or the Joint Planning Commission area. The reason why I opened it up a little bit was increasingly we're getting more, more and more hired press about having people that are, could be eligible members of our boards and commissions in the city. And one of the goals of this board is if, is if it gets approved, is to replace the tree board and the creekside board. And you might remember, one of the things that we had talked about when we first created the creekside board was how we might be able to be better neighbors to the people that live near that facility, and that board actually allowed people from that area to be on that board. Again, all these things are merely just suggestions, starting point for discussion. So if you have any questions about it, I'd be happy to try to answer them, or if you'd like to see some, some things change, I'd be happy to amend them and bring them back at a future meeting.
I just looked at it from, you know, the way we have other ones, and my suggestion would be that we say that it shall have five members, and that one member would be a council member. One member still may be a utilities commission member. And then just say one member may be a non-resident. Again, that's kind of consistent with some of the other boards that we have. The Planning Commission, for example, says that, and there's some other ones, too. But it cleans it up, but still provides some flexibility and, and it keeps it consistent. I think a council member should be on it, because you're looking at, with the creekside and the trees, and be interested.
I like having one non-resident, because there are, there are, you know, people that have vested interests that have, you know, they do have businesses in town, so, I mean, they have a vested interest in Hutch, and I think it'd be nice to have them, because there's a lot of, lot of talented people that live outside of Hutch that'd be great on the board, so. So, I like that part of it.
What does everyone else feel about those suggestions?
I'd be fine with them.
I'm good.
So, a couple ways you could consider a first reading with those changes to, to the ordinance, or?
Bring it back again with those changes for another first reading.
It's okay just to do it now, that's fine.
Just include that in the motion to consider a first reading with those changes.
Should I list them again?
You can't, otherwise I have them.
You got it?
You got them?
Got it.
All right.
Yeah.
Shall be five members, one council member, one member shall be a city council member, and then one member could be a non-resident. Make that a motion.
I will second.
Motion by Steve, second by Mary. Prove that ordinance with the directions or additions or whatever.
Changes.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carried. All right, we have ordinance number nineteen-dash-seven-ninety-five, ordinance repealing Section thirty-one-point-twenty-six and thirty-one-point-thirty-one of the Hutchinson City Code pertaining to the creekside advisory board and the tree board. So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Steve, second by Chad. Will approve that ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Uh, we have snow removal and ice control report October eighteenth through January of twenty-nineteen. The city financial report and investment reports for January two thousand and nineteen. Hutchinson Housing Redevelopment Authority Board minutes from January fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Planning and Commission minutes from January fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Public Arts Commission minutes from January fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Planning, zoning, building department quarterly report. Dolph, you have anything else for us?
Harry, could I ask Matt one question, or with the snow removal report? It's our budget, looking like, it's, you hear that? That's been asked, and.
You want to stop? I'm joking. Really, the brutal reality, yeah.
No, but still, it does have an impact, and.
Yeah, no, it does have an impact, but the operation's gonna continue regardless, yeah, obviously.
I'm sure it's gonna depend on what happens the rest of, you know, we've had really bad springs and then nothing in the fall.
Winter time, so it's, we'll put it this way, if it keeps up like it is, some issues.
But we had.
Well, under budget.
Yeah, there were a couple light years, yeah. No, I just, it's a, it's an interesting question. We hear it too, Steve, yeah. I mean, but that's the frank, it's the frank answer, though, is it's, it's out of our control if, yeah.
Well, that is out of our control, but obviously, some other things could be.
Yeah, exactly.
So.
That being said, it really has only been snowy for the last six weeks. You know, November, December were pretty light.
Well, except in, in January, there's quite a few salt-in-days, and guys are out.
No, with, the guys have been out a, a lot, and, you know, obviously, Dolph, I'm sure seeing it with his people being utilized also.
Those are still.
Yeah, exactly, so. And I think this, the scary thing is, it's only February twenty-sixth, and March is still ahead of us, so, yeah.
I could, we could have Andy Bright talk with John if he's, if he's in. Just that, maybe, just to kind of give us an idea where we're at, where we're trending right now, I would say, or.
Well, I was out in Cosmos area, and I got out on a county road and got to the other end, and I had to turn around because they plowed it, but they plowed right straight across, so there was about a six-foot snowbank that I don't think my van would have went through, so I was back out the other way, so, yeah.
Could be worse, no doubt.
I haven't heard anybody ask about, excuse me, go ahead.
No, I have nothing.
All right, go ahead, Dave.
You say, I haven't heard any, asked, no one's asked me about budget, but have had a lot of compliments about what has been done. And I think, you know, typically, that outweighs a lot of other, you have a lot of complaints, except the snowbanks are getting high on driveways. And someone said, can't the city? And someone says, can't the city take them out? And I said, are you on a corner? And they said, well, on a corner of something.
And I'll say this, you know, our guys try to do that, but then it's a double-edged sword because then we get people that complain that we do it. So, you know, some people want us to, other people don't want us to.
Did I get compensated for having mine turned on?
Well, yeah, I mean, I have had a few, but it's like, realistically, I tell them, where are we supposed to put the snow? I mean, we're running out of places to go.
No.
I went by Sorensen's and our snow pile is...
Yeah, we're looking at a different site, a third site as we speak. So John and I were just talking about that earlier today. Yeah, we're in the armory in the Alspahn, we're running out of room.
The site by the park garage is two-thirds. A week ago, it was about a quarter full and now it's two-thirds.
Yeah.
And getting hot.
Yeah.
Park garage armory site, yep.
Eric Kent, what else do you have?
Yeah, handful items quickly. I believe I sent this out to council. We did receive funding for the HOC system at Montana and Highway Seven. So that was good news. I guess the kicker was MINDAT said they would take care of our match also. So it's usually an eighty-twenty split, so convinced them that they overbuilt the highway years ago, I guess, and it was too wide and it was MINDAT's fault.
No, I joke. Did you get that in writing?
I think that was the panel I bet in their discussion, apparently after I left, so anyways.
Jack has left now, so.
So we're going to be looking at that. There's an advanced construction approach that could be arrived at there that I'm starting to talk to MINDAT, possibly building it in early two thousand twenty prior to the DTR going on downtown here, so we'll see what happens. It'd be ideal, that's always kind of what we strive for. And granted, we're at the eleventh hour to accomplish that, but we'll keep talking about it. Glencoe Transportation Study, a couple of Saturdays ago. And well-attended. I know Steve was there. I was there fairly early, after it started around eleven o'clock or so. And they had a hundred and fifty people there that came through in the two hours. Attend, Dave. Good deal. Yeah, so I think talking to MINDAT's staff, they were happy with the results, the attendance, and talking to them a little bit about the feedback. I think they're happy with the initial fee, public input and feedback. And if it goes that direction, I think Hutchinson could conceivably be happy with the connection that could be made. So they're a long ways from arriving at the recommendation, though, and ultimately delivering a project. But this is, could be a big step, improving the connectivity of twenty-two to two twelve.
That was a good example of, I forget what the word was on the park master plan as far as adding food or beverages to an event. They had food and it was pretty well attended, so.
Yep, they had hot dogs and chips and sodas there.
Remember that in the future.
Couple other things, county board was northeast Ring Road, that was discussed. And that may be hitting their actual county board meeting to do the initial phase of the feasibility study at their March fifth meeting, I believe, maybe at first Tuesday. So just a heads up on that front. Likewise, well, you guys heard this added in my stack. There might be a discussion in regards to the Dakota Route Trail at the future county board workshop. I don't know if you've heard anything more on that front, Steve or...
Oh, yeah.
Then, yeah, Campbell, outer Campbell Lake restoration. Matt was contacted by Representative Erdol's office. Staff worked with WSB, our consultant that's been administering that study preliminary engineer effort. And, yeah, we put together a bonding, short bonding request for Representative Erdol to carry forward. Well, it's very preliminary, somewhat premature, you know, where a, but they asked, they asked, his staff asked Matt and we took him up on the opportunity. So we're going to have further discussions from a staff standpoint with the DNR on fine tuning that request. It's very short and sweet and broad at the...
Part of it was to get it in kind of the system. It's almost like our CIP where, you know, it might not be this year, but next year for sure it'll be a bonding bill, so.
And lastly, Fifth Avenue South reconstruction. You know, we had somewhat of a involved, I guess, a public hearing a few weeks ago. In comparison to most, I guess, we've had over the years. But I followed up with some property owners. I know councils had some correspondence with some of those property owners. So I think we're good on that front. Yeah, we've also made a decision to narrow the sidewalk to a five-foot width. So that'll just pull it away from the properties, from the buildings, homes, a foot.
That will help.
Yeah, so we'll do that. And then I also sent you some street with standards and guidance, both from state aid that we have to achieve and then our standards that we arrived at a few years back in conjunction with the PD, the fire department and, you know, public works maintenance staff. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thanks, Kent.
Matt, oh. Matt, you know, on those standards or that we have internally, would that, there be any advantage of kind of adopting those as part of our policies? Or I think they're good, but it's just, and I know there's flexibility.
Yeah, that's, that's why I'm a little hesitant. I know where you're going, Steve, and, you know, I was just glad a few years ago we actually got, like I said, got everybody in the room to have a good, honest conversation about them and put pen to paper and get them documented to some degree. I think we still need the flexibility on street whis, just...
And I don't, I think you can obviously include that flexibility in it, but I think it just helps with the discussions like we had the other night.
I think that's conversation. I think there's a, we could put in a policy because I think that helps even communication standpoint when you have somebody's hearing with the council and whether that's something we add to our complete streets policy. Or, I mean, that's a little bit different, but there might be an opportunity there somewhere.
And I know there's, yeah, Matt's exact, there's, if you look in the policy book, there's all sorts of old policies with respect to some just street design stuff that's been around for some years that's very dated. So I think it'd be good, I think if we did it in a policy manner that allows us the flexibility, basically to make engineering judgment decisions. And at the end of the day, the council, you know, I don't present, you know, the hundred and fifty-page plan sets and two-inch-thick specifications to you, but you guys in essence pass a resolution, not in essence, you do pass a resolution approving the plans and specifications as part of the special assessment process. So, yeah, I think that'd just give us some guidance. And then if we deviate from it, we can, yeah, point it out. Ken, let's start with you.
I don't have anything.
Mary.
Well, I just want to thank all our staff that's out there plowing those streets and making those banks high. And everybody who's out there should be very careful, every intersection. Like, I come up to off of Lynn Road onto Second Avenue and it's tough. You know, people are driving, they're driving straight through, but they don't realize that the person who's at that intersection can't see them until you're inching way out there.
Don't Jim have a big pickup?
Well, he has the truck. I have the car.
Well, I think that you need the pickup, Mary.
But I mean, you know, and it's happening all over. It's just not there. It's in many other intersections. Those banks are so high right now. And I know they can't be taking them all down.
We were addressing them.
Yeah.
You need to be careful.
Snow events come, you know, that interrupts the peeling back of the banks. And honestly, it's to a point, there's not much you can peel back. So the operation change, changes into a hauling operation, which is very more, you know, it's a lot more time to pick snow up, put it in a truck and haul it away than just push it, simply push it back into the boulevard. So, yeah, that's the struggle. We need sunny thirty-five-degree days is what we need, yeah.
We're not going to get them up for a while.
Our cars don't have antennas as much anymore either. You could put a ball on it or something.
I know, you used to do that. Now you can't. But I mean, you know, everybody needs to just be aware, just to slow down a little bit and be very careful. That's it.
Steve?
I guess the only thing I'd like to do is reiterate your fire hydrant thing that you talked at last meeting. You know, you don't pay attention to a lot of things and you don't realize it until someone brings it up like you did. And there are many out there that are not shovelled around. And I would encourage those to, or the people that live close to them, to do that. Seen some that were out and then blown back in again that weren't reclaimed out again. But there are a lot that are not cleaned out. And all you see is this flag or this stick above the hydrant. So I'd encourage people to do that. And again, to echo Mary's caution, just be cautious. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Steve?
Just a sculpture stroll update. We have seven pads. We had a record number of applicants this year. And we're actually partnering, or I shouldn't say, well, yeah. Ridgewater College and Citizens Bank have agreed to sponsor pieces. Citizens is going to put a pad on that little park on Franklin and Second Avenue. And Ridgewater already has a space. And so they're going to work with the artists, but they selected pieces from the ones that were submitted. And then we've got, we have seven pads, but there were two others that were kind of unique. One is a bench, so we could, decided we'd put that in place of one of the benches in Library Square.
So that would be permanent then?
No, just part of the stroll, so one year.
Part of the stroll, all right.
And then the other one is going to go down by the Senex property by the trail. And it's a little larger, so looking forward to that. That should be nice.
Installation in May?
In May, depending on...
On weather?
Yeah, for sure. Event center update.
Yeah, the sheetrock installation and painting is done. We just got authorization by the league to go ahead with our carpet purchase. It's carpeting that they have on hand, so there isn't going to be a lot of delays. So that'll be probably even hopefully by the end of this week, the carpet will be removed and then reinstalled on the senior side of the house there. And then there's some wall coverings that need to be done. And it'll be the same vendor that provides both the carpeting, the tile floor and the wall covering. So, you know, if all goes good, it could be completely done within the next two weeks. If there's some delay or something, it might get out to three.
So carpet like this, the squares or this one big piece?
Yep, one big piece. Well, twelve-foot wide, seams, fully adhered. But the league, since we've crossed into some higher thresholds, is our partner in the decision-making. So we bid it several different ways. And then they inform us what they're, since they're going to be paying out an insurance claim, what they're willing to provide, so. And it'll be nice. I mean, the carpet in there, if you didn't know that we had a flood and that it floated, you'd think, it doesn't look all that bad. But because it floated, we got to get rid of it, so.
Yeah, and right now the east half of the building's open and ready.
Fully, yeah, fully functional. The city had their safety meeting there. The seniors were playing cards. There was a lot of the activities that they do were happening. It's a little bit of a juggling situation for September, but, you know, she kind of thrives on that, so it's, it's good. And the big weddings have happened, so.
Well, and kind of with that is the United Way is having their big benefit, dueling guitars up there in March, and March twenty-second. And tickets are available for that.
Yeah, there's quite a few musical things that are happening. The Soft Flyer, you know all about that one, don't you?
Yeah, the sixties, the sixties bands are going to be back, so.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
The only other thing I had was, and I've talked to Kent about this, but as far as the Fifth Avenue project and the tree removal, when I started looking at it, we're basically taking every ash tree along that route. Some homes and some areas, that's boulevard trees there are. And so it just seemed like, why not? So we've kind of talked about before, intermix some of them. So you have, people still have shade and the street has that look to it, but you start intermixing some younger maturity trees in it. Again, that's where policy, I think, would be helpful or talking more about that type of an aspect. But, yeah. And by Main Street on the southwest corner, there's two really large elms. And I just wondered if it would be possible to actually tuck the sidewalk against the curb right back to the alley there and try to preserve those if possible. And then since the city maintains the sidewalks, for Main Street anyway, it's right there. So that, some of that could be looked at more.
Since we talked, Steve, there's more to the two elms specifically. We have to tie into an existing storm sewer system. So we're getting them with a pipe, actually.
Okay.
I didn't recall that when we spoke, so. Not much we can do. There's a unique storm sewer that goes to the east and pickups, or the west, excuse me, picks up the alley, then it actually goes across the street to Mr. Faye's side of the street and picks up some drainage there, so. Yeah, we're getting them with that, the need to replace that old pipe.
Okay.
The ash trees, like we spoke, I struggle with that a little bit. And I know Donovan does, our city arborist, you know, this is, you know, we're trying to diversify. We're, you know, we're trying to thin out the ash tree numbers around our community, knowing what's conceivably in front of us with Emerald Ash Bor. We just look at it from, I think, the simple standpoint, the corridor is going to be, you know, disturbed, you know, and rather significantly disturbed with this project. There's going to be a lot of boulevard activity and grading. And we're removing, Steve's right, you know, we're removing thirty-six trees, or sixty-six trees. Half of them basically are ash trees. So, yeah, there are trees that we're working around with the sidewalk and trail location, larger trees, you know, to maintain in place. We are transplanting seven trees that are smaller diameter trees that can be transplanted. So I think we look, we simply look at it, now's the time, you're going to be in there. We're trying to thin out the ash trees in our community. And why wouldn't we just simply take those trees up and look at it from a corridor standpoint? And, and why wouldn't we just simply take those trees up and look at it from a corridor standpoint? And diversify the, the tree species in the end. It gets tough and I think what staff would struggle with, well, and, and Donovan can make the determination, I'm not saying it's, it's rocket science or anything, you know, but. You know, whose ash tree do we keep and whose don't, you know, that's honestly what we'd struggle with and if somebody posed the question to us. Well, that's not an easy question to, to answer on, on either side, somebody want, might've wanted it to go away and somebody, you know. Might want to keep it and, yeah.
And with disturbing the, the stuff around it too, that's not saying that they're gonna survive the, all the.
We're, we're leaving other trees, even though we're doing the same work, so that's not a.
And I should mention, not all the ash trees are being removed just because they're ash trees, you're exactly right, Gary, some of them are being impacted by the construction. I don't know the exact count and some are, by all means, so that's really what we struggle with and, I mean, we could do it differently. No doubt, but I don't know honestly how we would do it differently, fairly and consistently. Other than making a somewhat subjective determination what stays and what goes.
Well, again, it's all spacing, it's not that hard, um, and I get. I get frustrated because we've been talking about this a little bit and trying to intermix maturities and. Then there's resistance to cut healthy trees and, uh, even though we might be. Trying to mix in that maturity and still reduce the ash, but then here, we don't seem to have any qualms at all of taking them all out, so.
Anything else, Steve? Gary, Matt?
I don't have anything tonight.
Well, thanks Dave, you stole my thunder, uh, I just wanted to thank everybody that adopts the fire hydrant, I, like, like you said. You go around, there's quite a few that are done, so, um, uh, Doug McGraw is on the Airport Commission now. And actually he took Dick Freeman's spot, so actually he could be appointed again to the Airport Commission. So that's alright with everybody, I'm gonna put him on for the Airport Commission, um, Matt?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, uh, the, the fifth of March, is there a, uh, uh, meeting over with the county? For planning or, um. I seen that come through an email about, uh, planning, uh, for disaster planning.
Oh, yeah, that's a, there's.
Training opportunity.
Yeah, training.
Yeah, that's a. It's a. Emergency management.
Yes, yeah. So is that, uh, something that, uh, I think I would like to go to that.
Yeah, if you're interested, let me go, let me know, cause then we can communicate.
It's for emergency management.
Emergency management. So, alright, sorry to throw, throw you off guard there.
I know what you're talking about.
Okay, um, hockey, the boys are in the section finals tomorrow, uh, Thursday night, I believe. Uh, wrestling, we have two people going to state, uh, um, Gifferson and Curtis, correct?
Correct.
So, good luck to those boys down at state, um, and that's about all I have, so.
I just make a suggestion, Mayor Gary, if you got something you want, your thunder's stolen, go first.
Okay, I'll have to do that next time.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to adjourn, all in favor? Opposed, carried.